Special meeting called to order. First item on the agenda is to review and discussion of South County Local Government Development Agreement Act and the proposed adoption of the requirements of the act and the creation of uniform requirements for the execution of development agreements under the act. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Jeff Shaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to walk y'all through this draft ordinance and maybe just real quick, I kind of set the table because, you know, I know we're all hearing this many, many times, but, you know, we may have members of the public that are joining us via the YouTube for the first time and maybe just kind of understanding holistically what we're trying to accomplish and how these pieces fit could be useful information. So sort of where we're at right now, and it's a combination of items that are before the council and items that have at least from a draft standpoint been reviewed by the council and maybe going through a process now with the planning commission. We've taken a number of steps to, I guess, do a little bit of housekeeping with the land development regulations and laws of the county and then also sort of respond to changing development patterns in our area and in our state. And so the, I guess, first step, although it's not, it's not going to be the first ordinance adopted, was revising the county's land development regulations, which, you know, land development regulations, while they deal with the subdivision of land, they don't deal with a specific subdivision and they're not approving a specific subdivision. What that ordinance does, and it's referred to as LDR, Land Development Regulations, is it provides a framework of requirements that the planning commission works through with developers and property owners when they propose to subdivide their land. So it's not approving any single subdivision, you know, it's not applicable to any single subdivision, it's simply the standards. The standards that Newberry County has in place now were developed in the late 90s. And so it's just something that was overdue to be addressed. And so we've gone through a process that involved a number of members of staff, Katie Works, who's our planning director, Josh Rowe, who is our public works director over roads and bridges, a Dura, which is an engineering firm that does our stormwater reviews, they also do some other civil engineering for us, and a planning consultant that we use to assist us with development of ordinances like the LDR. And then I was involved in that process, too. Went through the planning commission, came to council, and we're now at a point where you've got second reading and public hearing before you get the 6:00 PM meeting. So that's where we're at on that. But again, it's infrastructure standards and standards for the actual preparation of the plat, you know, the items that need to be shown on the plat. That is the bulk of that ordinance.
And it can be changed if needed.
Absolutely. I would look at all of these things as like a living document. You always heard about that with, you know, like the constitution and many things, it's a living document. And Newberry County is at a point now, too, where maybe in the past, we didn't have to pay really close attention to some of these ordinances, but times have changed and development patterns in our state have changed, and this is not going to be something that's put on a shelf. This will be something that Newberry County, the planning commission, county council will be consistently monitoring and making changes as necessary to respond to changes and things that are proposed. So we had that. The, the second thing, and this, this item will actually, assuming that it is adopted today, will be adopted before the land development regulations, was the repeal of clustering. You know, we've got the ability in the current zoning ordinance, or developers do, to administratively have a higher level of density than the zoning classification for their property allows, to receive that higher density in exchange for the preservation of open space. And there's some provisions in there related to setbacks and all. And council expressed a desire to repeal that so that the process that a landowner or developer would go through to achieve a higher density would be rezoning, which is a legislative process. It starts with the planning commission, comes to council, you can only amend the zoning, an ordinance with an ordinance, and so when you amend the zoning ordinance, you do it with an ordinance. So the elimination of cluster, assuming third reading passes today, will be, that item will be taken care of. We then talked about two significant ordinances, one of which is in front of you, and one you reviewed the concept of at the last meeting, and it's now going to the planning commission. The first one of those ordinances is the proposed residential master plan districts ordinance, which is establishing or proposes to establish a new zoning classification. It doesn't change the zoning of any property in Newberry County. It's like putting another tool in the toolbox, and it's based on principles of plan unit development, it's called plan development zoning now, where a piece of property is master planned and the master plan becomes the zoning of the property. And there's some provisions in there for significant open space, significant perimeter buffering, and exchange for, and in exchange for that, a higher level of density that would be allowed in the core of the property. And we have changed that. You know, initially, what was recommended by the planning commission was a little more expansive. We took it from eight units per acre to eight units per developable acre, which is significantly different, because now you're eliminating the acres that's not developable, and that's the number you multiply by eight. And now the ordinance that you have in front of you is six. So it's been reduced to six units per developable acre. So it's, it's, you know, been ratcheted down from what was initially recommended. So there was, there was that item. The next change, and this is the one that's going before the planning commission, is reworking our perimeter buffering and open space requirements within the zoning ordinance that would apply to the other residential zoning districts within our zoning ordinance. So the residential, if you move forward with it, the master plan residential district is a new zoning classification. The second ordinance I'm referencing that's going to the planning commission for review and input, and they may have some changes and additions they want to make to that, would be buffering and open space requirements for the other residential zoning districts, along with some other housekeeping changes. We felt like, based on y'all's feedback for residential master plan district, and the fact that any change needs to go through the planning commission and then the county council for approval, we felt like, well, that should also apply to plan development district zoning, which is currently allowed in the zoning ordinance. We wanted to make sure those two things were consistent. That's an example of like one of the housekeeping items in the ordinance. So there's some housekeeping stuff in it, too. The next step we felt like y'all would want to take would be a discussion of development agreements, and that's the item that's on the agenda for the 5:00 PM meeting today. And so there's a statute, the South Carolina Local Development, Local Government Development Agreement Act, which dates back to the mid 90s, that's in Title VI, Chapter 1. So Title VI is where you find statutes that apply to cities and counties, and in some cases, special purpose districts. Chapter 29 is the comprehensive planning act for zoning and LDR and all this other stuff we're doing. Chapter 31 is for development agreements. The entire chapter is devoted to that. The purpose of it is to deal with longer term, and in most cases, larger developments, where the amount of time that is involved with the development can be lengthy. During that period of time, you can have changes in regulations and laws, and in some cases, you know, on one side, you've got developers that are concerned, well, you know, when we started this thing, these were the rules of the game that applied then, and now we're getting towards the end, and maybe subsequent phases that haven't been approved yet, and now, you know, there are new requirements in place. For cities and counties, the, the primary benefit is that you can identify the impacts of that development and what the facility needs are, and you can try to get those addressed on the front end. And in some cases, those are facilities on the property that will be needed, you know, who, who's going to own them, who's going to build them, who's going to pay for it, you know, those types of items. But in some cases, it's off premise. These may be facilities that are, these developments are placing a burden on that are not located on the property. And so that's really what this statute exists for, and it gives an explicit authorization to counties, and like I mentioned, to municipalities, too, to enter into these development agreements with developers. There's some limitations on the use of it, though, in the law. You can't apply it to every tract of land out there. The tract, you know, the minimum, there's a minimum, there's two thresholds. One is size. The tract has to have 25 acres or more of highland. The statute doesn't define what highland is. You do that at the local level, but in most cases, local governments look at the hundred year flood elevation, and anything above that would be a highland, and you got to have at least 25 acres of that to qualify. The second thing, or second threshold, is development time. And the longer the period of ti, or I'm sorry, the, the greater the number of acres, developable acres, or highland acres, the longer time horizon you can have for an agreement. So, for example, if this, the number of, of highland acres is less than 250, then you can't go more than five years with the development agreement. If it's 250 to 1,000 acres, you can go 10. If it's 1,000 to 2,000 developable acres, you can go up to 20 years with the agreement. And if it's over 2,000 highland acres, then you can agree to a term with the development that could be greater than 20 years. So you've got size of the property, it's got to be 25 acres of highland or more, and then you've got some time limits for the term of the agreement based on the size of the property. It's graduated like that. That's in state law, I mean, it can't be varied at the local level unless by ordinance we want to make it more restrictive.
Yeah, we can go, we can go further, we just can't go less than.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
So, so in other words, the, the 25 acres, that's set in the, the state act?
It is.
Right? But we can go less than the 25 acres to make this kick in? We just can't go greater than that? Is that what you're saying, or?
We could be more limited on ourselves and we could make that threshold higher.
Can't go under 25.
You can't go under 25.
So we couldn't say that this, these agreements won't kick in until you have 50 acres, is what you're saying? We couldn't, we could do that.
We could do that.
But you can't make it 10, or, yeah.
Can't go 24.
Yeah. That's right.
Okay.
And Jeff, just for clarity, this also is, I think we talked about this, combined with the current ordinance that we're considering, allows us to look at impact on public safety and all the things that are associated with that, and gather that upfront as well and measure that as part of the development.
That's right. That's right. And with the changes that are in front of you for the land development regulations, with the land development review committee and concurrency, you can get the feedback from the land development review committee, which consists of a representative of the school district, the utilities, you can gather that input, and then that can inform the terms of the development agreement that you require of the.
Just want to get that, that, that has been asked of me a lot this week. I just want to make sure everybody's aware. We are, we know that if we're going to allow, have this, we, we need to do the, do the impact fees, because it will have a significant impact on public safety, it will have an impact on the schools, and will have an impact on garbage collection and recycling, so it does have a significant impact on the community.
That's right.
That's kind of like your off premise that you were talking about.
Yeah, yeah, and that very well, that could be outside of the fees themselves and would just be a negotiated public expenditure that the private party would be responsible for. Some combination of that. I mean, you've, you've got some latitude there. And then, you know, and I know this was just because I do the same thing, there is a statute for impact fees, this statute is Development Agreement Act, and so they are development fees, yeah, so they're.
Two totally different items.
Legally speaking, yeah, yeah, but very similar, it can be very similar in terms of how they, how they work. So there's some minimum requirements in the statute for the contents of the development agreement, and what we've proposed to do with this ordinance, and, you know, we need council's feedback on this, is that those have been incorporated into the ordinance, what's in state law, including purpose language that's in the statute. That's where you find in the whereas, as you know, a lot of times, what you use the whereas as the preamble in an ordinance for is, is to recite your findings. Why, why is it that we're doing the thing we're proposing to do, you know? And so you've got like a recitation, I guess, of the purpose and intent of the Local Government Development Agreement Act statute in the whereas of the ordinance. in the ordinance, and you'll actually find them in the append, or the exhibit that is part of your packet there. And so if y'all are good with it, I can just run through the ordinance for you and kind of explain what we're recommending, and get y'all's input on what you, what you'd like to see potentially changed. And then the next step in this process, provided that you like the concept and you want to move forward with it, is that it will need to go through the planning commission.
Right.
Yeah. So like I mentioned, you've, you've got a lot of findings in these whereas, as you'll notice that, you know, there are, I believe, like 12 whereas there. You can see that we've, when you go below now therefore be it ordained, that we're incorporating the findings in the ordinance, that's section one. So that's, you know, the justification for, in, in the intent of what we're trying to do. Then the provisions of state law are adopted in section two, and then we've got the development agreement requirements, some of which, like I mentioned earlier, are in state law. And so let me just, let me just run through those real quick with you. So in this case, what we're proposing to y'all is that development agreements be required for all residential developments, which consist of 25 acres or more of highland, which, you know, that's a statutory requirement. Now, this is something we've added, talking about adding, adding things, and which consist of two or more dwelling units per developable acre. And so the idea there is you would look at a site, you would identify, okay, what is developable? What is not in a required buffer? What is, you know, highland and developable acreage? You would identify it, and if you've got two or more dwellings proposed there, it would trigger the requirement for a development agreement. The thought process there is that if it was a low-density development, that y'all likely would not want to require the development agreement. Now, you could not have that qualifier in there, and you can require it of a development that has one or two acre lots, but in the past, based on our discussions, I guess I was trying to find something that would kind of balance y'all's desire to require these agreements, and we've talked about development fees, but then also not, in an unintended way, impact really low-density rural development. Now, like I said, I mean, you could, you could take, you can take that out, but that was the thought process behind the qualifier. So 25 acres or more of highland, two or more dwelling units per developable acre, not total acreage, developable acre, acreage, then a development agreement would be required. The development agreement would be reviewed by the planning commission and would be approved by county council. The statute requires that that be done by ordinance. So what you've got in front of you right now is an enabling ordinance. That's adopting the requirements of the act, adding some local requirements as well that do not conflict with state law, and enabling the use of development agreements. But each individual development agreement would be approved with an ordinance. That would be an instrument for approving the agreement, and you would also have this written agreement between the parties. The county, of course, will be one of those. State law requires that two public hearings be held prior to the passage of that ordinance, so you could do those if you so choose, in conjunction with the reading process. There's not a specific noticed time, you know, like, for instance, a rezoning is 15 days prior to the hearing, you know, land development regs are 30 days. That's not in the statute. It just says that the two hearings have to be held before it's adopted, and at the first hearing, you have to announce the date of the second hearing, and you've gotta put an ad for both of them in the local newspaper. So you'd have the two hearings and the reading process. And then what we would do at the staff level, this would be county administrator, county attorney, zoning administrator would be, would be, to ensure that everything with the development agreement is in proper form. And, you know, the ideal way to do that is to develop forms, just to kind of structure the provision of the information that would go into the agreement, and then develop the agreement. You can imagine this would be somewhat of a template document, where there would be consistencies from development agreement to development agreement, but they would be tailored to the specifics of the, the property involved. It would, the ordinance proposes to authorize the chairman of county council, the county administrator, and the attorney to execute the documents once they've been approved by council. It would take effect immediately upon third reading. There's the severability language in there, which is, which is good if any portion of the agreement was, you know, declared invalid or unenforceable by court. And then you'll notice in section 5E, where it's got a repealer in there for section 76 of the zoning ordinance, and that's because we already have some language in there related to development agreements, which this would repeal and replace. Then in the exhibit, that's where you see the development agreement requirements. And so that's the last two pages, I'm sorry, the, next to the last two pages of the document, Exhibit A, Development Agreement Requirements. Again, most of this is in state law. You gotta have a, a legal description of the property. You've got to have the names of the property's legal and equitable owners, and so like, an equitable owner, for example, in many cases, would be somebody who has a purchase contract, you know, in the property. They could be party to the agreement. The duration of the agreement, which again, you know, to a certain degree, the maximum is gonna be addressed by statute based on the size of the property. Yeah. In most cases, you're gonna be talking about an agreement that can't go more than five years, in most cases. The developer would have to, of course, we'd have to confirm this, but would need to represent the number of highland acres. The current zoning would be, need to be identified, as well as any proposed rezonings. And I'm gonna show you a flowchart in a minute that kind of illustrates that with respect to the residential master plan district. The uses that would be allowed are permitted on the property. This would include also densities, intensities, building heights, you know, all of that would need to be addressed in the development agreement. The identification of any public facilities that are needed to serve the development, you know, when they would be constructed, who would construct them, who provides the service from the facility, you know, what do they cost, and, you know, who pays for them, and then the schedule for assuring that they're in place. And in some cases, what you would do for a lengthy development where the impact is on down the line from a time standpoint, is you'd have milestones, and the milestones would identify when those facilities have to be completed by. Because in some cases, it may be more than one type of facility upgrade or new facility that's necessary. You know, reservation of dedicated of any land, a dedication of land that may be necessary, you know, easements, for example, land for public facilities onsite, identifying what land may need to be dedicated for that purpose. The local development permits that would be required, I mean, in most cases, this would be the land development permit, but, you know, you could also have a zoning permit that's necessary, because the zoning that's, the proposed development's not consistent with the current zoning, so they need new zoning, or there could be some conditional use permits or special exceptions that are necessary, and so you would just identify all of those in that section of the agreement. You'd also have a, a finding that the development's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and the land development regulations of the county. Any historic properties that will need to be addressed would, would be, would need to be addressed in the agreement as well. That could involve the preservation of them, it could be the restoration, it really would depend on the circumstances. In some cases, you could have more than one governmental entity that is involved with this and party to the agreement, so you have to, you have to identify which one is the controlling, you know, who's gonna administer this. So that would be in the agreement as well, if it, if it applies. You need to cite all the code sections for laws and land development regulations that You know, we also, one of the things I mentioned before, and this is a benefit to a developer, I guess, under this scenario, is, or at least the statute contemplates that, is the concept of vesting, where you become vested under the current laws and regulations of, in this case, the county. In certain instances, you have the ability to, if there are law changes, to impose those new requirements on the development. And so you need language in the development agreement, if you want to preserve that right, that addresses it. And you'd have, you'd have the findings in the development agreement for that. There's some minimum requirements for revisiting and, and doing periodic review, and it's gotta be at a minimum done every 12 months, and that's something that would be done by the planning department. So we would have that. It's not only addressed in state law, it would be addressed in the development agreement. This agreement has to be recorded at the courthouse, and so there's a 14-day time period to do that, that's in statute as well. And then you really need provisions in there for amendment, cancellation of the agreement, any modifications, you know, all that would be, would be addressed in the agreement, as well as what if there's a material breach? You know, if there's something material that is not complied within the agreement, how's that dealt with? And that would be spelled out in the agreement, and there's language in the statute for that as well. Now, Section V is, is an addition, subsection V, and that's our last subsection, and this is where we get into fees. And you can see the language we have in there is, is related to burden and impact on services, and the proportionality of the fee that would be paid, and the fact that, and y'all can say, you know, if you want to move forward with this, you know, this enabling ordinance, and you want to implement development fees, then, then a question is, how do you want to authorize the fees? I mean, they have to be done by ordinance, there's no question. I guess one thought I had, and it's reflected in here, but it could be changed, is that you would annually review the fees as part of the budget process, and they would be contained in the uniform fee schedule that the county has. You know, we've got the budget ordinance, we've got budget provisos, and there's a third document, the uniform fee schedule, and that's where, you know, building permit rates are, fees at the transfer station, this would be in addition where you would have the development impact fees, you know, addressed. And then you can see on that final page, I took a stab at the language that could appear in the uniform fee schedule for setting the fees. Now, I know the example that you have, I typed into mine here, just so I would have it in front of me, does not propose a fee. And in looking at, again, this is a different instrument, but looking at development impact fees in the surrounding area, there's considerable variability, and some of that is because the facilities that are being funded, it's not just different counties and different cities, but in some cases, what the impact fees are being levied for are different. You know, like, this city may have a recreation impact fee, and this county may have a public safety or a fire or an EMS fee. So there's just a different, you know, collection of those, and they're in different localities, too, so you can imagine the rates vary. But it looked to me like $2,500 per unit. Now, impact fees, generally, you're dealing with an equivalent residential unit where you can convert that impact fee for a standard dwelling to something larger for a larger dwelling, or apply it to commercial property. ERU is the acronym for that. You see it in stormwater, too. This would not, or at least we wouldn't propose to you that you'd have that for this. This would just simply be for residential units, where you'd have one rate for a single family detached, and you'd have one rate for multifamily. And typically, the way that impact fees, and this, again, is not impact fees, but the way impact fees work, is there usually is a lesser rate charged for multifamily. And it just really comes down to, because you're, on average, your occupancies are gonna be higher, your density's gonna be lower, the amount of land that is involved in the infrastructure requirements generally will be higher for single-family detached. So typically, you will have a different rate for that. In looking at our capital needs over a 20-year period, and I guess more specifically, because that's not a really precise way to describe it, the county does not have a full-blown CIP, you know, that's something we're working on, and we have a financial advisor that is assisting us on the revenue side of that. But we do have a pretty clear picture of what is reasonable that the county could address on an annual basis that we have in the way of needs. So you can see, that's taking a much larger number and then reducing it into something that is actually realistic. Like, if you need four fire trucks, the reality is, the county's not in a position to buy four fire trucks. We'll be doing well to buy one a year, and one tanker a year, and one ambulance a year, and you, if you can follow me, kind of going down. Then looking at a 20-year period, the numbers that I was coming up with, if you made it proportional, and you took the total number of housing units in the county, which the Census Bureau right now estimates, we have 18,900 housing units. And then we looked at, okay, a 50-unit development, or 100-unit development, on down, I went on out to 500. What is that as a percentage of our total number of dwelling units? And then taking that percentage and multiplying it against the, the 20-year average, I came up with $4,100 per detached, with a recommendation that it'd be a reduced fee for multifamily at, at 78%. I mean, that could be varied. So, you know, I'm not necessarily, I mean, you didn't ask me for a recommendation yet, so I didn't mean that in terms of a recommendation. I was trying to give you a feel for magnitude. And that was just looking at realistic capital for fire, for rescue, EMS, the transfer station, the convenience center sites, roads and bridges, and, and then our building capital. I mean, we own 77 buildings. We're about to have 78 with the construction of the public safety complex. Just looking at those expenditures, trying to annualize them, and then come up with proportionality for the fee, that's what I came up with. And that seems, it just, it wasn't, that was not engineered. I mean, it, it seemed to be consistent with the range of impact fees for cities and counties in the state. It was pretty well in line with that. That was a lot of information, I know. If I could, maybe before asking you for questions, could I show you like a little flowchart? So you could visualize how this would work? It's really simple. I think Eric's gonna cue me up.
Amy, I'm supposed to, I'm supposed to my phone back down.
I guess what I wanted to show you now is, well, how does, how do, would development agreements work within the approval process? And so, you know, not the best flowchart in the world, but, you know. This is, I guess, two different, just call them two different silos, and I'm gonna start with the one on the left, because if council approves the residential master plan district classification, that can kind, that will change the procedure when it's that zoning district. And so what you see at the top, and I'm going with the left flowchart, it could start with a zoning map amendment. That might not be necessary. If the property that we're talking about is, you know, has an appropriate zoning for what's being proposed, then, you know, a map amendment would not be necessary. But I'm showing it in case rezoning is required. The next step is sketch plan review by the planning commission. And, you know, that's a more generalized depiction and, and provision of information by the landowner slash developer to the planning commission. That then, based on the new LDR, goes to the land development review committee, which, like we talked about, it's got representatives from the county on it, it's got a representative from the school district on it, it's got representatives of utilities. It goes to them. Some folks, you know, we talk about it in terms of concurrency as well. Well, that is reviewed, that feedback is provided back to the planning commission so that they can make their decision on sketch plan. And at that point, we also have the information that we need to put together, the development agreement. And the reason- And the reason that we would recommend to you that the development agreement process occur between the sketch plan and the preliminary plat is there's a significant amount of cost to private parties when they go to preliminary plat. You know, sketch is a little less costly for them to provide what's necessary to get what they need, either an approval or denial, or an approval with conditions. The development agreement is somewhat similar to that. You really are stepping up the cost to individuals and to other private parties when you get to preliminary plat review. There also can be a fair amount of time that elapses between the sketch plan review and the preliminary plat. In some cases, that is like six months. I mean, not in all cases, but in some cases, it can be a lengthy period of time. So there is the ability to work the, the development agreement process into that, call it a time gap. The right-hand column though, is how it would really need to work with a residential master plan district zoned property, assuming y'all approve that as a tool in the toolbox. You'd have sketch plan, you'd have the land development review committee process, then you would have the formulation of the development agreement contingent on zoning. You know, I mentioned when we talked about the, the ingredients of the development agreement, current zoning, and then any proposed zoning changes. Well, you would have language in there about the proposed zoning change to residential master plan district. Because, you know, in that new zoning classification we're talking about, it is more along the lines of preliminary plat requirements. There's a fairly significant amount of cost that goes into preparing those plans for our MPD zoning. And so, whereas the development agreement is, is less costly to comply with. And so we would just recommend in that case, that the development agreement would precede the zoning map amendment, but be contingent on the rezoning. If the rezoning didn't happen, the development agreement would be null and void unless we went back and renegotiated it in some way. Again, that would go through council. Then if it were zoned with our MPD, it would go on to the planning commission to go through the preliminary plat process. But a key though, is that at the beginning of the process, you go through a sketch plan, and you have a land development review committee review, because that's going to help identify what public facilities, if any, are needed. So that those can be addressed as part of the agreement process. So that's kind of the thought process behind that flow. And I thought maybe it would be helpful to see it, or we thought. I received a suggestion on that. That it would be helpful to help visualize that process. What questions can I answer? Or do a better job of presenting?
I guess I'll, I'll start it off. Since y'all looking at me.
Wait until you get off.
Two, I guess first a comment, and then second a question. I understand the 25 acres is set by the state law, the act, and we're not going to be able to do anything with that. All right? My concern with everything that we're doing, everything we're doing is, we're, we're trying to, trying to make sure that we have appropriate control over the what, where, and the how. Okay? To the point that it, it doesn't get out of hand, that the citizens still have a voice on what they would like to see in their county, and, and burden not be placed upon them to provide services for developments that they don't want to start with. All right? So that's where I'm coming at with this. All right? So my, my thought with the 25 acres and the, and the two houses per acre is, we're stuck with the 25. All right? I, I would love to see it less than that, because in my opinion, you can have a whole lot of 24-acre tracts that cause just as much impact as one 98-acre track. All right? That, that's just done all at one time. All right? So, so that, that's where I'm going with this. So personally, I have heartburn over us putting another loophole in there for the two houses per acre. I just do. All right? Because I, I feel like we're already handcuffed with the 25-acre size. So I, I have issues with that, I have concerns with that. So that's my comment. My question is, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'm, I'd like to hear you give me an explanation. What, explain to me the difference between a development fee that we're talking about here and an impact fee?
Sure.
And this is from a, anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, so with, with a development fee, it would be a fee, either it could be negotiated or it could be provided for by ordinance, so there's consistency, which is what we're recommending. That would be a payment to the county in recognition of the impact the developments are having on the county. It's not restricted to specific capital items. It does not, it's not tied to a CIP. It doesn't have to be obligated within a certain amount of time, and it doesn't have to be expended within a certain amount of time. Impact fees are, and so in a way, it's not statutory specific. You know, we, and we fill in the gaps in terms of, you know, how we impose those and for what, and, you know, and how they're used and when they're used. Impact fees, that, that is dictated statutorily in the Impact Fee Act. And there are limitations, one, you know, to capital items. Two, capital items that are qualifying. You know, they have to be in service areas that the impact fee statute, you know, permits impact fees to be used for. There has to be the development of a CIP. And then there are some pretty, there can be pretty sophisticated calculations that go into determining what impact fees the rates are. And that's why it's really unusual for a local government not to hire a consultant to prepare it. I mean, some of them are very sophisticated, as, you know, like algebra. Yeah, there's the minimum cap, capital expenditure requirement, where it's got to be $100,000. I mean, you can use it on some rolling stock, provided it's over $100,000 in cost, and it's got to be within one of the qualifying service areas. Which for us is, is most of what we, almost all of what we do is qualifying. There are some administrative areas where we technically have some capital that, although most would fall under the threshold, that you couldn't use impact fees to fund. But our core functions are our core functions that are provided for in the statute. So that, that's really the, the main differences. I mean, it's-
You have more flexibility with this than you do impact fees.
It, it does, yeah.
And the reason I brought that up and asked that question is, we, we just need to be careful on what we call it. All right? So-
Well, that, that's a, that's a good point.
You know, because I, I know, I, I know even, even you in this explanation stuck in there a little bit on both sides. So we just, we just need to be careful on how we, what we call them.
Yeah, and, and you know, development agreements are used, the extent that development fees are used, I don't know that I have quite as good a handle on that. I mean, impact fees are a little bit easier to look up online. And so when I mentioned the development impact fees, I was talking about the rates, and I wanted to give y'all a feel for what, what the ballpark kind of is. I guess one of the concerns that I really have too, related to impact fees, and it may be something that y'all want to do now, or in the near future, or in the distant future, but right now, the amount of revenue that impact fees would generate would not be a significant amount of money, but then you would have requirements related to how it's spent, and some of those are timeliness requirements. And so now you're getting in a position where you have capital items that the impact fees have been adopted to pay for, and where's the source of additional money to pay for those items? And that just concerns me. And I know we've got a couple of counties that have run into that. Joni's had some firsthand experience with them. Yeah, I think- Some, some have had to pay it back. You know, some are now rethinking impact fees and are considering moving to what we're describing here. And I don't know, maybe that's an example where, you know, we've had an opportunity to learn from others and what they've done, and won't say mistakes, but, you know, approaches they've taken that maybe aren't a good fit for Newberry County.
Thank you for your effort.
I know there's a lot going into this. I just want you to clarify something for me, since we talked about the rent, the residential section first. And that is, if I did my math right, and I'm not good at math, so I'm not sure that I did my math right. Currently, under general residential, we allow four houses per acre. You can put a house every 10,000 square feet. That comes out to like .23 acres, right? So, to do less than that would be more restrictive than what we already allow in general residential. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure I did my math right.
And, and you know, again, I mean, y'all may, I, I was trying to come up with some language that, where you could avoid maybe impacting very, very low-density, I guess technically, development, non-traditional subdivision development that would then be required to pay the development fees. Trying to come up with, okay, we know the size, you know, it's got to be a decent-sized tract of land, but how do we, you know, ensure that, you know, the types of development that are, are resulting or will result in the county incurring cost, that, that, that those are the payers of the fee to offset the cost of, of the burden and the impact? That was the thought process. But you could have different criteria, or none, none. I mean, certainly-
My concern, I, I go back to what, what I said. My concern is the, the issue that regardless of the size of the tract of land, anytime you have development, anytime you add more people, more houses, more structures, there's just going to be an impact. All right? And my concern is not putting any more, not reducing the burden any more than what we have to. All right? Because, like I said, you know, 25 acres, that's a pretty little chunk of land. All right? I mean, you can have lots of 10-acre tracts that give you just as much of an impact as, as two 25-acre tracts. So I, I just, like I said, my concern is, I don't want, I don't want to put any less of a limitation in, in, anyway.
That makes sense, yeah. Well, that's easily changed, yeah.
The 25 acres, it, right?
That part is not.
Yeah.
It's just the density.
Yeah, I got you. Any other questions?
Don't have any.
Very good.
Unless y'all have an objection, we'd like to get that in front of the planning commission and have them review it and, you know.
I think that'd be a good next step.
Okay. We will do it.
All right, that concludes everything we had on the agenda for our five o'clock meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
motion by chairman, councilman.
Former chair.
Chairman Johnson. Seconded by a vice chair. Any discussion?
It's not discussion, I just wanted to put it out there while we're on record. Our church is in revival this week, tonight is the last night, and so I'm going to leave and come back in remotely. I, I don't want to miss this meeting. This is one of the most important meetings we'll have as a council, and so I don't want to miss it, but I'm going to come in remotely so I can be back at my church for revival when it starts at seven. So I don't take lightly what's going to go on tonight, and I want to be an active part of it, but I do, as a pastor, need to be at, at my, at, at the church that God called me to as well.
Totally understand. All right, we have a motion to second. Any more discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. All our regular meeting to order, six o'clock meeting to order, with the invocation of pledge by Councilman Fulmer.
Join me, please. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening as your humble servants. We know that we fail to measure up in many different ways. We come to you this evening for your guidance. We ask for your help, your assistance in dealing with the many obstacles that we have facing us within Newberry County. We ask for your guidance for these things so that we may improve and sustain the quality of life that we so enjoy within this wonderful county of Newberry County. Please be with those that are in need, those that are sick, those that are hurting, those that are in pain, those that are grieving. We thank you for the many volunteers that we have within Newberry County. We thank you for the employees of Newberry County, and we thank you for the citizens of this great county. We ask these things in your name, and for these and whatever else you see that we may need, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
My pleasure.
This is flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First, if I could ask everyone to silence their cell phones while we're conducting the meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. We'll take these as one item, if there's no objection. Hearing no objection. Item A, Newberry County Council Work Session Minutes, October first, two thousand twenty-five. Item B, Newberry County Council Meeting Minutes, October first, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion by Councilman Reader, seconded by Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Todd, you with us?
I am with you, and I vote to approve, yes.
It is unanimous. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I've motioned to adopt the agenda as presented. Motion by last year, seconded by Councilman Fulmer, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item three, public appearance, Colonel William Matheny Jr., the commander of the one hundred and seventeenth Engineering Brigade, South Carolina National Guard. And what an honor it is to have you with us.
It's my privilege, Chairman. And Council, I appreciate you having me here this evening. By way of introduction, I wanted to give you a little background on what the engineer brigade brings to the county of Newberry. First, about fifteen years ago, the brigade headquarters that was here was moved down to Charleston. And in that time, the Newberry Armory had had smaller sized units there. Well, we identified that that was sort of a mistake. And the patriotism and the support that we had in the city and county of Newberry were greatly underappreciated. And we rectified that about five years ago with the establishment of the one seventeenth Engineer Brigade here in Newberry. The Engineer Brigade is one of the newest in the army inventory, but our historical ties take us all the way back to World War One, when Woodrow Wilson established the Forty-Second Infantry Division. And the one seventeenth Engineer Regiment at the time was established with three companies from South Carolina and three companies from California. Those engineer companies came together to form the one seventeenth Engineer Regiment, and they saw combat in France in World War One. So, we carry that legacy on with us, and as luck would have it, the historical thread, we will be deploying this month in support of the Forty-Second Infantry Division overseas once again. Now, at home, the one seventeenth commands two engineer battalions that are scattered across the state as well as multiple engineer companies. And in times of need, we will have the engineer resources that you need and the citizens of this great county need for us to be able to recover from any type of natural disaster that might occur. We wanted to say thank you for your support and your hospitality, and make sure that you understood exactly what we felt was needed here, and that we have reestablished that. And part of that is me coming and saying thank you for your continued support, and we greatly appreciate your hospitality and having us here tonight, as well as hosting us at the armory just north of town.
Well, we certainly can't thank you enough for being here and for all you do for us to protect us, and may God protect each and every one of you.
We appreciate it. And pray for the families. We'll be, we will have multiple events throughout the state, but we're, our family readiness group will be having events here as well. So, while we are deployed, we'll bring our families and single soldiers that are remaining back here together so that they have the camaraderie and support that they need as well, so we greatly appreciate it.
If they need anything from us, please reach out and let us know.
Yes, sir, we'll do that, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I think we wanna get a photo up with the full council. Okay, Colonel. Is that okay?
Yes, sir, we're, tell me where to go.
Right in a minute. All right. Item number four is a special recognition, time, employee recognitions. Mr. Shaker.
Yes, sir, thank you. Chairman Shealy, members of council, have good evening, everybody. This is a tradition that we have every second evening, or third Wednesday, where we recognize our employees that have hit a fifth year anniversary, five years, ten years, fifteen years, and all, and so on. We've got over a hundred and ninety employees here in Canada, about half of them are within the sheriff's office, and we've got three under the sheriff's umbrella that we're recognizing this evening. The first of which is a ten-year recognition for Miss Katie Vogt, if you could join us. Okay, well, yeah.
I don't think.
So, large crowd, so I didn't pick her out.
She might be working, and I think the shorthand is.
Okay, okay, well, there's a lot of challenges in communication. So, Katie is in dispatch, and you know, our dispatch team is such a critical aspect of what we do in Newberry County, making sure that emergency services and resources get to people who are in need. Katie's a key member of that team. She handles much of the training, she plays a key role in training. And I understand that she can handle the stress and the situations that you come in and the nine-one-one call center that you have, just very well, and does a tremendous job for us. And again, she's served here for ten years, came to work for the county back in nineteen ninety-five. So, if y'all won't mind joining me in giving her a round of applause. When she's not working and has time to come up there. Our next recognition, we don't get a chance to do many of these, is a thirty-year, and Mr. Garrett, if you could come forward, please, sir. I can find you. So, really appreciate you joining us this evening to be recognized for thirty years of service. Garrett came to work for the sheriff's office thirty years ago, back in nineteen ninety-five. You know, you've been somewhere when it starts with nineteen.
I haven't been enough.
But Garrett came in as a patrol deputy, and was promoted to sergeant, and then to lieutenant over night shift. And then you went into investigations as a lieutenant. Was then promoted to captain, and then into his current role as major. And as major, he is over operations, so he has the courthouse staff. You've got the patrol division, which is our largest division in the sheriff's office. And you're also in charge of our vehicle fleet. You can imagine a large sheriff's office, a number of vehicles, and they have to be purchased and maintained and dealt with, and the building too. We've got a pretty significant building there with a lot of assets that you're responsible for managing. So, we just can't thank you enough for everything you do, not only those duties, but just protecting the public and your service in law enforcement. And if y'all would please join me in giving him a round of applause. Appreciate it. Our next recognition is thirty years, Mr. Odell Shumpert. We've got two thirty years. So, Odell, real pleasure to recognize you this evening on behalf of county council. Odell came to work for us thirty years ago, in nineteen ninety-five, in the sheriff's office. Like Garrett, came in as a patrol deputy, excelled in that role, was promoted to sergeant, and then into his current position as lieutenant over day shift. Again, he's the largest division in the sheriff's office, a lot of personnel, a lot of needs there, training, coordination, and you handle that so well. And that's why it's just such a pleasure this evening to recognize you on behalf of county council, and our management team to thank you for all you do.
Thank you. What an honor and a privilege, and two of my classmates, matter of fact. Odell, you don't run quite as fast as you used to, I don't believe, but. None of us do. Quite an honor to have y'all, to recognize y'all. Y'all are part of our backbone in Newberry County, thank you for all you do. All right, item number five is ordinance number zero-nine-zero-three-two-zero-two-five, an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, to repeal one fifty-three point zero-nine-zero Cluster Development Single Family Residential. This is the third reading. Mr. Shaker, any changes, anything?
No, sir, it's the same, same language that was reviewed and approved by council, first reading and second reading.
Very good. Do I have a motion to speak third reading? A motion by Councilman Fulmer, seconded by Councilman Reader, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Item number six, ordinance number zero-nine-zero-four-two-zero-two-five, an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number twelve dash twenty-four dash zero-one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number six dash eleven dash sixteen, and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications and districts so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling twenty-nine and ten hundreds acres, designated as TMS number three forty dash three dash two dash one-one-one, from RG General Residential to R-two Rural. Anything change?
No, sir, this, this is a, like you mentioned, twenty-nine acre track. It's referred to Cypress Lake, it's there off of Whitener, and they're requesting basically downzoning from general residential to R-two Rural. Planning commission's recommended it, and you all have read this ordinance twice already.
Very good.
Nobody disagreeing?
No, sir, nobody expressed any.
All right, do I have a motion to speak third reading? By Vice Chair? Seconded by Councilman Smith, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. All right, item number seven, ordinance number ten dash zero-one dash two-zero-two-five, an ordinance amending the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, chapter one fifty-four, Newberry County Land Development Regulations, adopting updated standards for the subdivision and development of land in Newberry County, and providing for the repeal of all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent necessary to give this chapter full force and effect. This is the public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open. Mr. Tyler Johnson. Say your name, your address, and we'll, okay, five minutes. All right. Shouldn't you, Chairman?
Tyler Johnson, nine-nine-five Henderson Court.
Gotcha.
All right, actually, I think that was wrong, I have to look back up. But the only thing that I saw reading that I thought might need to be added would be the zero wetland mitigation allowed in residentially developed properties so that stream beds existing in those properties can't be destroyed, and then later on, the developers just go somewhere else and mitigate them there. And I just wanted to share that with you, because I don't think we need to have any damages done to the waterways because of the adverse effects it would have on neighboring landowners. That's it, look at that. Look at that.
Sure that's all? I can't believe that's all. Thank you, Tyler. Ms... Did you sign it twice?
Lisa.
Ms. Lisa Hostetler, did you sign it twice?
I signed it twice.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wrote really sloppy. I'm in shock.
Well, I...
So I tried to write it less sloppy.
That's okay.
Just didn't work. But anyway, yes, we own 234 Nonpar Road. We also own land in Pomeroy and Prosperity, just undeveloped land. I like the, I would persuade y'all to think about no lot lines. It's just not safe. Just think about that, it's just not safe. And no mitigation to preserve the natural beauty, and like he said, the natural streams. We've had issues in Chapin, right behind my house, where they destroyed streams and everything, and we had a massive flood down a road because the water had, like, nowhere to go. People were literally locked out of their homes because the water was like this high. And so we need to preserve the beauty and the water, proper water runoff, and to save any heritage trees that y'all need to save. The civil engineers are able, they're smart people, and they're able to design developments based on the topography of the land with saving of the trees, with the other things that y'all need to save, because that's what they're paid to do. You could just make it easy or make it challenging to develop beautiful subdivisions, not clear off and just put houses. And that's my comment.
Thanks, ma'am.
Good evening. Tyler Turner, 968 Old Jolly Street Road, Prosperity. Looking over the new LDR, you know, one of the things that kind of goes to my mind with, while I live in Newberry County, I have a business outside the county, in a neighboring county. And there's a lot of times where you'll see subdivisions that are approved, and once they're approved, they seem to disappear into a developer's filing cabinet for a dozen years or so. You know, the thing is, is when an approval is given on a subdivision, I think there needs to be some kind of time limit in place, that there needs to be a start date on. So when you're looking at things like that, you know, we may be at a different point from an economic development standpoint 12 years from now than what we are today. You know, the approval of that subdivision would be based on where we are today. We all know growth is coming. It's about doing it the smart way. And so the last thing you want to do is look at a road that has, you know, no developments on it, and you have several that are approved, and then all of a sudden, 10 years down the road, you've got them all popping up at one time, and that's creating a lot of issues that you then have to go back and rectify. So I would like to see something as far as like a time limit to start, and possibly even a time limit to complete the project. You know, something going on and being stretched out over a long period of time could be something that could be detrimental to surrounding properties and landowners. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is everyone we have signed up? I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to this be second reading? Motion by Mr. Reader. Second, second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion?
I do have one, to try to, I guess, address a couple of the comments. One, starting with the wetlands. I know that there is a requirement that you cannot damage the wetlands, but there's also a possibility of being able to do wetlands mitigation. That's a state law. I think we do have the ability in order to not allow that. We could. So I'd ask the staff, maybe take a look at that, see if that could be something that we could write in there. As far as the timeframes, I think our permits do actually have a timeframe already. So, okay, all right. That's all I got.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Item number eight, ordinance 10-02-2025, an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, to establish a new zoning district, RMPD Residential Master Plan Districts. This is the public hearing. I will now declare the public hearing to be open. Mr. Randy Suber.
Hello, Councilman. I'm Randy Suber, and my wife is here, Patty. I'm just here to voice my concern about the land development and houses per acre. We live in prosperity, and right now, we are developing. And I've lived here all my life, she's lived here all her life, and we're just not used to a lot of traffic and a lot of development. We even got a neighbor that moved in close to us. He used to live in Lexington County. He moved from Lexington to Chapin to try to find a good place to live. And now, he's concerned about land development in Newberry County. Newberry County's always been a great place to live. Why can't we keep it that way? Not cluster everybody into one place. You have many problems when you have that. And that, I just want to voice my concern about that. Thank you for listening.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Tyler Johnson, Henderson Court, 693.
Same place.
All right. And just to kind of coincide what we were just talking about in the work session, just we're already requiring a 10-acre minimum lots or development size here. We raised it to 25, we've solved that problem. You know, it'll still be under the old, but it would take all these, and they would then now become part of the development fee that we were discussing there. In the current one, I would like to see the zero lot lines removed. I know it was kind of misrepresented by accident during the joint planning commission when we were discussing it, that zero lot lines were given the same as duplexes. I now know that they are not, and I think that we would be serving ourselves pretty well by removing that from there. Also, to go along with the raising the minimum, I'd like to see us create a maximum currently. We've discussed how this is a living, breathing document, we can come back and change it down the road. Currently, Newberry County is not set up from an infrastructure for these gigantic projects. So why don't we go ahead and put a maximum in there that would go ahead and cap it so it's in writing in our regulations, so we're not having to be challenged or fight that down the road. And then, the last one is currently, we require a two-year notice to begin. I'm pretty sure the joint planning, we voted to drop that down to one year. From the time that they get approval, they have one year to start on the project. If they don't, then it dies. Currently, how y'all's was written when I read over, it said two years. And that could have been something that was just missed, and I just noticed that. But that's it. Still, every three minutes.
You amazed me.
Jonathan Wedeman, 3776 Highway 773, Pomeroy. I don't think I was quite prepared to speak so quickly, but just overall comments about development in the county. Been here all my life, 43 years. We, I think we've all been here at least that long and seen how quickly things have grown, especially in neighboring counties, Chapin, Lexington. Things seem to have gotten out of hand very quickly, so hope that we can come up with some things that can hopefully prevent that. Also, I do think the development fees are very important to take the burden off the taxpayer, because all these houses come in here, development's growing, I mean, there's a lot to be updates to the water, the sewer. Also, emergency services. I've been a volunteer fireman in Pomeroy for 20 years in county, so I know the struggles we encounter with equipment, personnel, things like that. As it stands now, much less if we add more, more to it. So that's, that type of funding, I think, is very important for those things. But yeah, the number of houses per acre, to me, is pretty important as well, because I work a lot of places around the county and see people that have moved here from near and far, and have moved here to escape exactly what we're talking about. And now they're already talking about having to move again, so just think we need to get ahead of that and try to do what we can to... We know it's going to grow. I know it can't be stopped as much as I, you know, I've always grown up without development. I personally don't like it, but I know it's probably coming. So just need to make the best of it and make sure proper measures are in place. Thanks.
Thank you, Wedeman. Alisa Wedeman? I don't know if I said your name right. If I didn't, I'm sorry.
That's okay. All right. 3776 SC Highway 773. First, I want to thank the council members who responded to my email that they got on Monday. I really appreciate, at least you respecting that I sent you an email and responded to me, so I appreciate that. Many families live in this county for generations, one of them being my husband's. His grandfather and great-grandfather built the first fire trucks in Pomeroy with metal off their farm, scrap metal, volunteered and did, because the county couldn't afford the fire trucks, and they said, "We'll do it." So these are the families that live here, like this gentleman, and my husband, and a lot of others, that have been here forever. They built this county with their hard work, sweat, care, and made it a place that their families wanted to stay for generations. The residents of the county, we value the open space, the peace, the quiet, the roads, sense of connection to the land and our freedom that comes with low density living. This type of development or overdevelopment threatens this way of life for everybody. Overdevelopment doesn't just mean more houses, it means more traffic, strange systems, overcrowded schools, loss of farmland, wildlife, that we as Newberry residents love, that's what people come here for, they want the open space, not subdivisions. Packing five houses, six houses per acre, that makes us a suburb. It's not rural anymore. And that's not what we want. And once we have it, we can't go back. At another previous council meeting, I remember someone saying, it might have been you, Tyler, that once we change it, we can never put it back to what it is. So, once it's gone, it's gone. And I really concern that we're doing that, not for what counts, what Newberry County residents want, but because developers want that. And to me, that's a sellout to the people that are here, that, you know, who have grown up here, and that's not right for us at all. This type of development, this overcrowding, welcomes to me people who are coming here for less expensive housing, they're going to stay three to five years, and they're going to say, "You know what? We want bigger lot sizes, we want a nicer house, and we're going to leave." And that is not what we want for this county. To me, I want people that are going to come here, they're going to invest, they're going to volunteer in the fire department, they're going to volunteer at PTO in the library and invest and make Newberry better, not come here for three to five years and say, "Subdivision life isn't for me." Who lives in subdivisions? Anybody? Nope? Nope? So, that, you're attracting the wrong type of people. Why not make it where we want people that are going to come and live here? Give them the larger lot size, make us not the stepping stone, but the permanent place that they're going to live, and they're going to stay for generations, bring their grandchildren back here. You know, all those songs about coming back with your grandkids and going to the same churches, make us that place, not the transitional stopover in somebody's life. Help us protect that as Newberry residents, please. We want long-term growth and long-term investment, not short-term. As council members, you've been elected to be our voice. So I ask you, how many residents have you heard from that are in favor of this? Probably not many. I haven't talked to any myself that are in favor. Everybody's against it. Your vote on this issue should be what people want, not what developers want, not what real estate agents want, not what the housing market calls for, but what we as residents that are here, that you've heard from, want. I hope that my voice, their voices, the emails, phone calls, that you'll really think about what you're doing to this county and where it's going to take us in the future. Whatever development happens, it should not be on the back of the taxpayer at all. The subdivisions and the real estate developers, they should have to pay their fair share to make sure that the fire departments are funded, police is funded, because we as taxpayers do not want to have to increase our taxes to pay for full-time services, like fire, ambulance. My final note is that if you all wouldn't want six houses per acre in your backyard, don't vote to put it in mind, or theirs. Thank you.
Tyler Turner, 968 Old Jolly Street Road. I agree with a lot of what's been said before me by several other people. One thing that I do want to highlight, and one of the reasons that I wanted to kind of go in with the RMPD, because from my understanding, those are going to be the larger options when it comes to subdivisions. Part of me is concerned as a parent. What do those larger subdivisions bring in as far as overcrowding in schools? The stress that it brings upon those schools, the taxpayers that fund those schools, the teachers that work those schools, and the kids that attend those schools. So for me, that is a concern. You know, I want to see my kid go to the same type of schools that I went to. You know, I grew up my entire life in this county. I've lived here my entire life and attended school here my entire life. And so for me, having my child attend the same schools that I did and have a positive experience, and not have to worry about being overcrowded and shoved around, and be in, you know, classrooms that are at the max number of students per teacher and the stress that brings upon the teacher where my child isn't getting the direct communication needed for them to learn in a positive environment. And so for me, you know, keep that in mind a, as you're listening to some of the other people that have made comments when it comes to police, fire, stuff like that. The schools, of course, for me, as well, is a major part, so keep that in mind as you're thinking about these things as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up, so I will now declare the public hearing closed. We hear, we have heard you. There's been a lot of work put in on these ordinances, starting with staff, working its way through joint planning commission, and getting to county council. Is it 100% right and accurate what is needed right now? We think it's a good, a good package. We're not going to stop growth. We want to control growth as much as we can, and we think this is a good avenue as a way to control growth. There's no way to stop it. We're not going to shut the interstate down and say, "No one else can come in Newberry County." That's just, that's just not going to happen, so. We think this is a good product, may need some working on a little bit still, but there's been a lot of work put into it so far, so. I will leave it at that for myself. This is the second reading. Do I have a motion to this be second reading? Motion by Councilman Fulmer, second. Second by Councilman Smith. Any further discussion?
He's been on staff of a church, stuff like that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, the, before we move forward, I want to make one thing clear. Everything that we're voting on here tonight, everything we have discussed here tonight from a county council standpoint, is an effort that we're trying to, to do what you're asking. All right? It's a start. It may not be the end game, but it's a start. I certainly think we have things that we need to tweak, for sure, in order to fully hit what y'all want to hit, but it is a start. And anyway, and everything we're voting on is, and discussing, is an effort to try to maintain that control, all right? So I certainly hear what you're saying. I would also ask that, let staff go back and consider some of the comments we've heard, and maybe come back to us with a recommendation for third reading on some of the changes that we, possibly, based on the comments we've gotten tonight.
Will do.
But anyway, like I said, I just, I want to make sure everybody understands that everything we're voting on is adding more control, is keeping a... we're voting on is adding more control, is keeping a, a voice for you, all right? I, I certainly understand the density issue. That's a starting point. That's not a, that's not an end game. So anyway, like I said, if you could take a look at that, that'd be great. Anyway, I have nothing else.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say that the, both the moratorium and the extensive effort by, you know, the building and zoning committee and, and this is trying to, trying to say, we heard the citizens. I mean, even posting the, the ordinance on social media, posting it on our website has been, we hear you. We can't just pass this and put it on a shelf. It's got to be living and breathing if we're going to keep up with the times, because everything keeps changing. And so, but I, I do think we've laid a good foundation to work from, so I, I just, I don't want any citizen to think we hadn't heard, because we have and we understand the integrity of Newberry County and the specialness of it, and we want to keep that and manage and control what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion?
We may look at the number of houses per acre. I know it started out at eight, now it's six. We may look at either four or five, trying to make a compromise to get it lower so it's not that dense to start with.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll bring, yeah, I'll bring y'all back a recommendation, yeah, on , on that reduction. And again, you, you're going to have those, you know, also the minimum open space requirement and the large, you know, hundred-foot minimum perimeter buffer, which again, is just a minimum.
Yeah, we're just trying to, we're trying to get some things in place to help manage the growth, because if we don't do it, and we didn't do the moratorium, it was going to be the wild west out of control there, we're just going to run overs. So we passed that ordinance tonight to get rid of the cluster homes, which they could have built three houses per acre in R2 and not get it rezoned, but it would come back to us. So, so we're trying to do some things to try to manage that growth and everything, so. But we, we do want your input and continued input so we can make better decisions for the citizens of Newberry County.
Yeah, on a closing note, we all live here. We've, we've all been here all our lives, so we all love Newberry. That's, and I hope this is a step towards helping manage the growth rather than just let it overrun us. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Item number nine, we had no action was taken in our work session. Number ten, do we have any appointments? We don't, because I haven't made mine yet, Andrew, I'm sorry. Mr. Lisa Heston. You have three minutes.
I've got only five points. Okay, first point, just for information for you guys, an EMS truck, just the vehicle itself is four hundred thousand dollars. To fully equip it with staff is over a million. Don't know what a new fire truck is, might want to investigate that, because I'm sure it's not cheaper. It costs one million dollars to pave one mile on a road. Now, in regards to a development fees, keep these figures in mind, because twenty-five K, two hundred fifty thousand dol, two thousand five hundred dollars for the two hundred development housing divisions, only five hundred thousand dollars, that won't, that'll pay for one truck, maybe. Inflation, it's going up. It won't even start to pay for the equipping of the truck and staff, so you need a little bit more on impact fee. However, ten thousand dollars on a two hundred house subdivision is two million. That would pay for a truck, an EMS fire truck, new police, new staff, upgrade the recycling centers or whatever's needed, so that needs to be raised. Let's see. Lexington County only allows too many acres to be developed at a time. And I am full, in, in full agreement with two houses an acre with a yard, because kids need to throw the ball and dogs need to run around the house. So those are my comments. And I'm out of three minutes.
Mr. Becky Bowlen.
Hey there, Becky Bowlen on Coon Russell Road in Pomeria, and I just want to start off by saying that two houses per acre is one house too many, and I would like to see it still be one house per acre. One-year development to start, like Tyler mentioned, instead of two, I would like to know what this starting actually looked like. I've often seen in Chapin and Lexington where they'll go in and do a driveway and stick a stop sign at the end, and then the rest stays empty for a long time, so what does one-year development start date, what does that require? How far do they have to be to be considered started? I would love to see that where the existing housing development that I fought really hard to stop on, on Jolly Street Road a couple of years ago, I would like to see everything that they need for that area to be serviced before another housing development even comes to the forefront. Because if we can't provide, like we just heard, the money for what's already here, there's absolutely zero point to even entertain somebody to come back like we did a couple of months ago at the beginning of the year, the charades we saw that night with that man's housing development was insane, and there's no point to even bring it to this, you know, county council to even look at until we can pay for what we already have and to keep for more coming that we can't pay for. I want to make sure that the tax implications are not passed on to the current taxpayers, that it has to come from the development fees. And the number that we were given as an example during the work session would certainly not come close to covering it like we just heard some of the figures that she was throwing out. And I also wanted to make the point that the turnover stats that Alyssa mentioned, three to five years, you start seeing people sell houses that are in current housing developments. It usually takes between five and eight years for what we thought was a nice housing development to go to pot by the time the second and third homeowners come in. And that's exactly what's going to probably happen to that. A lot of these new people come in, they're going to leave, and now instead of what we thought might be a nice housing development, it will not be. Go visit behind Irma High School, and those housing developments in the eighties and nineties that were great and beautiful are not great and beautiful anymore. So I want all of those things to really be thought about when we're looking, but the tax implications to the current people have got to be at the forefront of what we're thinking about and safety. Do you want your grandbaby caught on the second floor of a house that is only ten feet from the wall of the house that is on fire? And you don't know whether the fire department can get there, can service that area, and can put out that fire before it spreads to other homes, because they don't have what they need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bowlen. All right. Comments from county administrator?
Yes, sir. Well, a couple of things I wanted to update y'all on, so the Prosperity Parks Project, that's our next capital project sales tax project that's in the pipeline for approvals, and so we've got bids that are due on November fourth. We'll need to review those and we'll have a recommendation ready for y'all the second meeting in November to hopefully award, if you agree, a construction contract on that project. We've also, will have a recommendation for y'all at that same meeting, which would be November nineteenth, on the award of a contract for the Safe Streets for All grant. You know, that's a grant y'all approved us to pursue, and then we budgeted the revenue and the cost of the project, which is being paid for out of that grant, to design improvements to the county's road system with, you know, safety and function in mind. And, you know, when we discuss that, the idea is this planning grant makes available implementation money to actually implement the projects. And so, you know, we'll need the plan to be developed by an engineering consultant, which the grant pays for, and we should have a recommendation on who to hire at the November nineteenth meeting. So be, there'll be kind of two major, major items for that meeting. And then I'll have some recommendations for y'all in terms of language for addressing the items that y'all would like changed in those two ordinances.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all your work. Comments from council, we have council, anyone?
I've said off a lot. Why don't you start with Mr. Mountsman Stewart?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, just one thing. You know, we try to control the, or mitigate what goes on in the county, but we have no control over what the city of Newberry does. And so sometimes they annex in and a couple of years, I don't know how many years ago before I moved back up here, but, you know, they annex right there across the interstate so they get the tax money for the Love Truck Stop. So we get called in this situation where if the city is next to a piece of property, that property owner wants to annex into the city, they can do that, and they can build a housing development there. We, as the county, can't do anything about it because it's under city zoning controls. So, I mean, we're just trying to make sure we kind, kind of control stuff in the county and, and try to minimize what happens. So that's exactly why I moved back up to Newberry County, so I could be out in the country, because I used to live in the subdivision in Irma. That's all I got to say. Just thanks for everybody for coming out and keep giving your input, because we need to hear it from you. Thank you.
I agree with what he said. Appreciate everybody coming out. Long as you have input, then we can try to make those changes. So if you keep coming out, keep letting us know what you want, what you need, then we'll try to work with everybody in the county, because this is your county as well as ours as far as being on the board. Thank you.
I will make one comment. I can't keep my mouth shut.
You know, I look at you for a reason.
I know you do.
You ain't going to let me down.
Oh, real quick, if you are a landowner in Newberry County, if you are a landowner with farmland in Newberry County, if you're a landowner with timberland in Newberry County and you wanted that to stay as it currently is, I encourage you to look at land trust, okay? If you've never heard that word before, look it up. There are several land trusts available. They are extremely attractive, okay? So I encourage you, especially our farmland, we're losing that at an astronomical rate, not just in Newberry County and South Carolina, but nation as a whole. If you, if you look up USD number, USDA numbers on the loss of farms and farmland nationally, it will scare you to death, okay? And it starts at home, it starts here, it starts in Newberry County, okay? So if you are a landowner, you're a farmer, look at the possibility of land trusts, okay? I encourage you. If you need information on it, I'll help you find it. Anyway, I've said probably more than I need to. Thank y'all for coming.
Again, we haven't taken this lightly at all. It's been through our staff, our joint planning, and, and now the council. We hear you. We, we, we like Newberry, too. You, you are being heard. We are trying to manage the growth. All right. Future meetings. Newberry County Executive Committee, October twenty-seventh at five P M. Newberry County Council Work Session, November fifth at five P M. Newberry County Council, November fifth at six P M. Newberry.
I'm going to add a veteran's name.
Yes, sir. I'm at it at the end.
Okay.
All right. Newberry County Council Work Session, November nineteenth at five P M. Newberry County Council, November nineteenth at six P M. I'll edit here. Newberry County Council offices will be closed November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day, and Thanksgiving holiday will be November twenty-seventh through twenty-eighth, the offices will be closed. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Curry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It is unanimous. We are adjourned.